Settle down, and would all the commissioners please come back? All right. Where's Commissioner Bradford? Do we have any presentations? All right, we'll go ahead and open with a couple of presentations. I think we got a couple retirees, and then we'll open the meeting.
Each month, we do recognize our retirees. We used to wait until the employee picnic, but we wanted to bring them forward as part of our ongoing, regular, monthly meetings. First off, Barry Finley, if he'll step forward. You here tonight? Okay. Barry is retiring from the Sheriff's Department. His original hire date was 5/7/2012, and he worked through 2025 as a senior deputy, and he'll be retiring as a sheriff's investigator, so if you'll acknowledge his retirement. And second, Mr. Cecil Lamar Martin, you're here. There's Cecil. Cecil, original hire date of 10/1/2002 through 9/6/2025 with park maintenance, lead worker two, moved into park maintenance supervisor, manager of park services, and is retiring as a Parks Maintenance Division manager. Congratulations on your retirement.
Please, please stand up again. Thank you very much. All right. Would everyone please stand for the pledge allegiance and invocation?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, where liberty and justice are our home.
Father, thank you so much for everyone that's here tonight. Please watch over us all and keep us safe. Please be with us and give us the guidance we need to make the right decisions for the county. Please be with everyone here and help them to get home safe. It's in Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen. Okay, I'll officially call the board meeting to order. Let the minutes show that full attendance, all commissioners here. We have the adoption of the agenda before you. Are there any deletions, additions?
Motion to approve.
We got a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
We have a second. All those in favor, say aye. Oppose? Passes unanimous. First on the agenda, might as well hit it first, we just had the last public hearing on the proposed mill rate increase. Would like to have each commissioner to, if they want to make a public comment, if they have something to say, please, please do so now. Don't be bashful.
I got a question.
All right.
So you mentioned earlier that my county taxes were going up, did you say 61?
6102, I think.
But is that, and maybe I miscalculated on my part, because I took, just to make sure.
That includes what you get back from the school tax rollback.
But what, just for, I'd like to know what, because I calculated it, and I came up with 41388 just on the county MNO. Is what I came up with, and I am so thankful with the school board, if we're voting on a rollback for them, or actually, I think some of their board members said it was a reduction. That is great, good job to the school board, if y'all watching.
I thought I had yours with me, but I don't right here.
You started out with it, so I just figured you did.
Lee, if you'll. But it takes into account, you don't pay the school bond.
Right.
Which is zero, and it takes into account the little rollback on the school, which you're taxed at your fair market value, where with a county, you're taxed at your frozen value.
That's right. I think I figured it right. I'm just trying to figure it out, just, because I came up with 41388, not including the fire district or anything else, just on the county MNO.
There you go, Lee. $61.01.
A total of everything, but for the county MNO.
You asked how much your taxes is going up.
I asked for how much my county MNO taxes are going up.
No.
Is what I asked.
Well, okay, but let's not argue about personal taxes.
Well, last time we mentioned that, you said, no, we're not talking about the school board, we're just talking about the county taxes. So I want to make sure that we're just talking about the county taxes, because we're not a governing authority over the school board.
That's correct.
Okay, long as we understand that.
Fine, I agree with you on that.
Thank you.
Do you have any other comment to make?
That's it.
All right. With that being said, does anyone else need to make a comment? If not, all of you were not here at the beginning of the last three mill rate hearings. I want all six commissioners to understand the general fund balance. That balance, July 1st, 2024, was $74,155,265. The obligations against that balance, the largest is the defined benefits unfunded balance, that is $24,427.61. Arbitrage is on there, that is the interest that we overearned on our bond money, before we spent the bond money, that had to be paid back to the Internal Revenue Service. 25 additional employees was added by the Sheriff's Department in November last year after our sheriff got elected. He wanted to start hiring for the new facility. That was $1,894,836.5, and the equipment they needed was $1,58,680. Employee vacation buyback was approved by this board, and that ended up being $400,807.2. There was an additional 25 employees plus equipment approved in May, so our sheriff could keep hiring, of $2,089,238.50. There was a pay raise done in March for all employees, and to raise the sheriff's salaries up to where he felt like he needed them to keep hiring. That was $1,766,666,000. There was a lot with a house and a double wide on it in Walnut Grove that was on the road frontage to our Walnut Grove Park that we're purchasing for $177,000, that was the assessed as appraised value. There was $6.5 million for the finish to complete the budget on the public safety complex, that's going to be 6.4 million, I mean, 6.4 million, $65,808. The Baker Street improvements going around the 78, there's $1,590,000 that's coming from there. The Baker Street House, the county paid $850,000 for it. The Youth Monroe Roadwork is $1,150,000. Whitney Road, there's a little house next to 911 in the middle of county's property, deeded one acre, that we purchased for $78,000. And under our fiscal policy and recommendation of Department of Revenue, we need to keep two months' reserves for catastrophes, and that's $17 million. And I can tell you, if another hurricane come up through here, like went through the Carolinas, that won't touch anything. That leaves $10,765,651 uncommitted. We're looking on the mill rate increase to raise $9,360,262. So it is feasible to take 100% out of the balance not committed, but then you already promised to turn around and amend this budget for the last 25 employees for the Sheriff's Department, and that will be $2,211,721.83. That will leave a negative committed balance on the general fund, which is very poor decision to do something like that. That would make the negative balance $806,332. Also, if you spend those last two items out of the general fund, you're going to lose an additional $575,000, it's earning interest right now, which is part of our revenue stream. So today, to keep that mill rate from being so high, we have taken $7,210,222, a one-time take from the general fund, and we're pledging to take $2,211,000 more if this passes. Are there any questions from the board? Then I'm going to make a motion.
Mr. Chan, I got a question.
Yes, sir.
So you're telling me we're $9,300,000 short this year?
That's exactly right.
And we are committing $7 billion roughly from the firm balance from this year to cover this year's budget?
It's already been taken.
Right. Plus $2 billion for the additional 25 employees.
Right.
So next year, we're going to be $17 million short. Is that what you're telling me?
No, sir. The $9 million will be there next year. The short that will be short next year is whatever we amend the budget if we adopt this mill rate.
So you'd be $7 billion short next year, going in?
For example, I'll run the numbers if you didn't. If you took 100% from the general fund, just say the heck with it, next year, this board, with zero general fund, will be looking at a 3.74 mill increase in an election year just to fund what we've budgeted this year.
Lee?
Any other questions?
Lee, I've got, are you, is it 358? Is that the right numerics?
I came up with 413.
For your address.
Well, we're not going to discuss personal tax bills right now. Are there any other questions on the numbers that we got? We are $9,360,000 short on a budget that's already approved. Under Georgia law, this budget has to be balanced, and there's only, if you want to discuss taking part from the general fund and lowering the mill rate, we can do that, but you'll be looking at a mill rate increase again next year in the general fund, whatever you take out, it won't be that. And this defined benefits liability is still growing, even though we've closed the plan. Y'all tell me. Are we going to deny the deputies, we can shut down a brand-new facility? Somebody asked, can we close parks and rec altogether? That will save the taxpayers $4.8 million, including salaries, and we can shut down every park, every ball field, every pickleball court, and it'll save $4.8 million. And I guarantee you, this crowd is nothing as compared to come out of the woodworks if you try to do that. This is a big county, folks, and it's big money to operate it. This increase is needed. And with that being said, let's see how the vote will go. I'm going to make a motion to adopt the 2025 mill rates for Walton County as presented.
If, if we look at these guys here, that every time they get a call, every time they go out on, you need to go to the jail that's there now and walk through it. I mean, I'm personally backed in blue, and a no vote to me would be them, so I'm going to segue the motion to raise the millage rate.
We still in discussion, we got a motion and a second, and we'll stay here till the cows come home, because I want everyone to understand what they're doing. Each one of us are trustee of Walton County. Lee, you know that, it's in the ACCG manual. We're entrusted with the financial condition of this county, we're entrusted with the employees, and we're entrusted with you taxpayers, and we do, every day, look at how we can save dollars and work on it, just like impact fees, they're fixing, we were looking at that. You have to go through certain red tape to increase some fees. This is a perfect storm. We've got a facility three times the size of the one that we presently have. We have prisoners in two other counties, and this facility overcrowded, if I'm correct, Keith. It's a 376-bed facility, and how many do you have today? 550, in a 376-bed facility. It's, it's a dire need that this county, and it's mandated to have by law, like it or not. It's, it's a mandated service, just like the courts and the DA, and I don't like paying for a public defender. We have to defend all the people that's in the, with your tax dollars, but it's a fact of life. And it's easy to say, oh, you got $75 million, just pay it out of that, that's taxpayer money. That's 100% correct. That's taxpayer money, and you see what it's committed against, and yeah, some people don't like parks. Yes, some people don't like jails. Parks and Rec's the only department in this county that we're not mandated by law to have, and this park system started years ago and has grown to be recognized as one of the better systems around. We have teams that are winning state, we have, our children are our future, and I'm a backer of the Parks and Rec. If you don't like it, that's fine, we may too. Everybody's entitled to their opinion. With that being said, we got a motion second. Anybody else want to make another comment? We don't have none from the gallery, this is Board of Commissioners meeting, please. All right, I'll call the vote. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Oppose?
Aye.
We got to do a roll call vote, we'll start with Dr. Adams.
No.
All right, we'll start, Lee Bradford.
No.
Kirkland Dixon.
No.
Let's see, I lost my alphabet. Pete Myers.
Yes.
Tim Shellnut.
Yes.
Bo Warren.
Yes.
David Thompson.
Yes.
Passes four to three. Now we have to accept the adoption of the 2025 mill rate for Walton County Board of Education. And this is a formality, they've already approved their mill rate. Someone make a motion to adopt it.
Make a motion to approve.
We got a motion from Kirkland.
I have a second.
We got a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Oppose? Passes unanimous. Adoption, resolution adopting the project-linked budget for 2025 swash resurfacing and amending the fiscal '26 budget. So we're adopting, already changing a budget we just funded. Has everybody read what that's about? Would like to make a motion?
Motion to approve.
John, you want to tell us what it is, please? Save me. We got a motion already from somebody, John, but.
Okay.
Second?
We got a motion second, you don't get to say.
All in favor?
Thank you, John. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Passes unanimous. John Ward, your turn.
All right, I've got three things I wanted to bring your attention tonight. The first is an ongoing project involving stormwater detention in subdivisions that, where their HOA has become defunct. We've adopted the ordinance, and in the next two weeks, we'll be sending out the letter to the first subdivision, and Commissioner Dixon, it's in your district, we will be giving a time period for the residents of that subdivision to come together and either reconstitute the HOA, or come up with a collective plan on where they will remediate the stormwater detention facility per state standards in the state stormwater manual, or if that fails, we will be bringing forward the documents required to create a special tax district, and the cost of doing the remediation in that subdivision will be then divided by the impacted parcels in that subdivision. This is a way for the improvements to be done, the ongoing maintenance, to where it only impacts those that are being benefiting from the requirements of that subdivision's detention pond, as opposed to absorbing it, putting it in the county budget, and it being factored in as part of the millage rate. So we'll be sending those letters out in the next couple of weeks. The second thing I have for you, and I kind of alluded. The second thing I have for you, and I kind of alluded to that earlier, is that I've brought back the original impact fee study. The, we're currently at 1,224 per parcel, and I will be bringing back a recommendation in the next, at the next meeting in September for your consideration. We can go up on that based on the current study, but I'll be bringing that forward for your approval. And finally, I wanted to make you aware, we've completed a complete assessment of the vehicles in the Sheriff's Department, and this is all based on what's already been approved in the budget. So far, we've been able to remove a significant portion of vehicles from the overall insurance list. And in doing that assessment, we have a situation where we have 62 vehicles over 100,000 and multiple, nearly 20, over, well over 200,000. And we're going to be working with Ford, Ford Motor Credit, and for the exact same amount of money that was allocated for the outright purchase of approximately 10 vehicles, which 10 vehicles per year is getting us further and further behind based on the deputies, especially those in the patrol side of things, based on the mileage they put in. But we have worked with a local vendor to meet state contract pricing. Another factor of this decision, and that will be a lease purchase over three years that will allow us to update the fleet by nearly 30 vehicles versus just 10 at the exact same price, and we'll maintain level budgeting as we go throughout. Additional cost savings that are factored into this is that those that are on patrol at night have to be paid overtime to bring their vehicles in and wait on our fleet maintenance to service them. So we're gonna see overtime cost savings. And the third factor there is that we also have them coming in and getting in line at our existing fleet maintenance. And one of the deals we were able to work out in addition to state contract pricing is that the local Ford dealership has a quick lube, and those deputies that are on duty during working hours will be able to pull through, get priority, and that will come at no charge to Walton County. So just, it was a agreed-upon program, and I'll be working with finance and the Sheriff's Department to move forward with Ford Credit to implement a rollout of an accelerated replacement program that'll reduce overall cost in the form of overtime and basically having to pay for oil changes through our in-house. And with our growing fleet, that will give a little bit of a relief valve for our existing fleet mechanics that we have on, on staff right now. So just wanted to make you aware of that as we proceed with that project with the Sheriff's Department. Other than that, that concludes my report for tonight.
Thank you very much, John. Now, planning and development.
Okay, 6.1 is conditional use 25-0153 and rezone Z25-0154. This is a request to rezone 8.734 acres from A1 to B2 for parking of commercial vehicles with a conditional use for outside storage. The applicant is Kibram Majes Kidan, owner is Next Generation Soccer Partners LLC. Property is located at 1890 Highway 81. This is in District 3. This was tabled, the first planning commission meeting, it was tabled, for the developer to get things worked out with DOT for their entrance. That was done, they came back to the planning commission, there was no one that spoke in opposition, but the planning commission recommended denial.
All right, I'm going to turn the public hearing over to the county attorney on these If he can get his mic to work.
Testing, yeah, thank you. So just wanted to go through the ground rules first off. So on these zoning matters, they'll all work the same way. Each side of a zoning matter will have 10 minutes. So the applicant will go first. Any time that they don't use out of the 10 minutes, they can save for rebuttal. But if they don't reserve any of that time, they won't have an opportunity to address the people that speak against. For those of you speaking against too, when you come up, please state your name and address, and direct your comments to the board. And please don't repeat the same things over and over, because again, it's 10 minutes for everybody that's speaking against. So you want to be, be nice and reserve time for your neighbors that want to be heard as well. With that, we'll let the applicant address the board.
All right. Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. Thank you for hearing our case. My name is David Berg, 4180 Center Hill Church Road, Loganville is my address, and I'm here representing applicant Kibram Kidane and his business partner, Joseph. We're requesting a rezone from the 8.734 acres from A1 to B2 for parking of commercial vehicles and RVs and a conditional use for outside storage. Property is located at 1890 Highway 81. The requested rezone and proposed use for outdoor storage is consistent with other properties that are in the area. Most of the adjacent and nearby properties are already zoned business, industrial, or special use such as a school, church, or event venue. There's Davis Water Company, Toby Sexton Tire, Hovey Villa, and Red Sea Transportation are all loaded, located nearby and have outdoor storage with, with parking. Kibram owns KMK Express LLC, a long-haul trucking company, and he sees firsthand the need for additional outdoor storage, including RV and truck parking in the area. We've discussed some of the concerns expressed with our Commissioner, Timmy Shellnut, and just to address a few of those. The business will be aesthetically pleasing, maintaining the natural buffer that is in place between Highway 81 and, and the parking space. There's a good stand of trees there and brush that'll remain, and there's about a 200-foot setback, so there's, there's a good buffer between the road. Clients will access the property with a key code or key card. Access will be monitored, there'll be 24/7 video surveillance. It is only for parking, dropping off RVs, trucks, and leaving. No overnight stays or anything like that. Business hours will be limited during youth middle school drop-off and pickup, and possibly 6:45 to 7:45 and 2:15 to 3:00 p.m., or as determined by the board, or if we have to work with the planning, you know, and zoning or whatever to make that happen. My wife and I own adjacent property, and we've lived here in Walton County for 45 years, and we're gonna continue to be neighbors. We do think that, you know, this is gonna be a good fit for the area, and so, anyway, we think it's just a good fit for the Highway 81 corridor, and we look for them to be neighbors. So, thank you very much.
Any questions at this time?
Shonda, don't we generally put a map up where the property's at?
Yes, sir. I'm so sorry I forgot. Okay, this is the property, and this is the site plan. And it still shows it up here in the right-hand corner if you want to see, you know, the back part of it is not included in this.
Any questions?
All right, is there anyone else here who would like to speak in favor of this conditional use and rezone request? Is there anyone here who'd like to speak in opposition? Saying no, we'll close the public hearing.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Entertained a motion from the board?
Sean, I'd like to add two conditions, or maybe it's be one, but no fuel storage and no hazardous waste, because it's beside that school. Or I make a motion to approve with those conditions?
All right, we have a motion to approve from Commissioner Shellnut.
I just want to ask one, one question. Would that be, did you want to include the conditions that he, that he, so you want to approve his?
No hazardous waste storage and no fuel storage.
Right, along with the 200-foot setback, leaving the trees that are currently there.
Yeah. Overnight.
No overnight.
Idling.
He named several things.
The code is in the code, but, yeah, yeah, not a problem.
In other words, the motion, so your motion would include all the conditions proffered by the applicant plus the two you added?
Yes.
All right, we got a motion. Do we have a second?
I have a second.
We got a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
Aye.
All right, we got one or two?
One.
Dr. Adams?
Mr. Dixon.
Oh, Mr. Dixon. You sounded alike.
We look alike, too.
I can't top that one, I'm sorry. Okay, it's, it's approved.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, 6.2 is a land use amendment, LU250199, and rezone Z25-0198. This is a land use change from suburban to employment center, and a rezone of 2.64 acres from A1 to B3 for outdoor storage and car repair. The applicant and owner is Melody C. Jackson Moon, property located at 1350 Mountain Creek Church Road, and this is in District 6. There were some neighbors that came and spoke at this meeting. They were opposed to adding this commercial use in this residential area. The planning commission recommended denial.
Can you blow that up a little bit?
Yeah, I'm gonna show, there's no site plan, but we do have a picture of, you know, like what's currently there or last there. So I have that, and then, is that good? Uh-oh.
All right.
We'll open the public hearing on this matter. Would the applicant like to come forward and address the board? Please state your name and address.
Okay, it's Melody Moon, and for this is 1350 Mountain Creek Church Road.
Please speak into the mic, ma'am.
Okay, all right. Okay, Melody Moon, and for this, address is 1350 Mountain Creek Church Road. Okay, so really, we asked her for rezoning, but we, really, we didn't need commercial. It was more so, we want to be able to clean it up and have outside storage, so not for truly a business. And we were looking for a compromise for that. My husband, Joseph, maybe he can tell you better out there than me, so.
How you doing? I'm Joseph Moon. What we got here is actually a hobby shop. Really don't have a business because I actually work for the county. But over the years, I've accumulated cars that I restore and maybe sell. This, we, we don't actually need it to be commercial. We just need amendment so we can park, so I can park the outside cars that don't fit in the building.
So a limited amount, so not just what you see, if it needs to be less than that, and absolutely, and to be able to clean it up, but limited, some outside storage, because they were saying no, no outside storage at all. That is what we're requesting.
Any questions for the applicant?
Shonda, would you please, like, explain what this is about, because I'm not quite understanding?
Yes, sir.
What they're saying versus what they're...
Okay, so this, this rezone application is the result of a code enforcement action where we received a complaint that there were people, you know, that they were working on vehicles there. You know, like she said, he has a daytime job, so he's not there during the day. But, now, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but at the planning commission meeting, she said he does work on cars and, and he, he does get paid. So even though it's not his full-time job, it is, it can't be treated any different than a regular automotive repair shop.
Okay.
It's unfortunate, but that's just the way zoning is. It's either you do it or you don't do it.
Okay, thanks.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions?
Are they all your cars? And, like, are they, are they all tagged? Like, are they all legal or no?
Some of them are antiques that I plan to restore, they're not tagged. And some, most, the majority, percentage of them are tagged.
I think part of the question, too, is whether you own them or somebody else owns them.
Some of them are somebody else's, but majority of them are mine own.
Any other questions at this time? Thank you. Is there anyone here, else here who would like to speak in favor of this request? Is there anyone here who would like to speak in opposition? Please come forward, state your name and address.
My name is Tony Smith. I live at 781 Chriswell Road. It appears to me, just by the pictures and what I read that today, earlier before this meeting, that this is more of a junkyard than a hobby shop. It really needs to be cleaned up. If you look at the other picture, I don't know if you can show that or not, but there's more cars here as hobby shop than half of us could do in our entire lifetime. So I don't know what the intention, I mean no disrespect to you, but that right there is more than a hobby shop. That I would call a glorified junkyard right there. Don't know how many of them run, don't know with changing of their zoning, if we, if, you know, they will increase, but to me, that's not a good look. So, to me, I would ask the commission to deny the change in zoning based on that. Thank you.
Is there anyone else here who would like to speak against this request? Would the applicant like to rebut that comment?
Once again, these cars are not junks.
Hey, sir, can I ask you a question? Are you getting, are you, the ones that you don't own, are you being paid to restore them?
No.
So you're not making any money off any of these vehicles?
Actually, no, and that's, that's the, most of them are, the, it's maybe 10 there that people had at their homes, didn't have nowhere to put them, didn't want to get rid of them, and say, can, can you hold it for me for a certain amount of time? So those cars will be going back to those people, let them handle that. But I have, like, the, the race car trailers, I have my old race cars in, and the, the old, the older cars, the 67, the 75, the 73, I got a 66, 62, but I'm just saying, they're not junks, and, and they won't, it won't increase if you change it. It's just that, we've owned this land for, what, 15 years?
And we're facing the 250 solar panels, and then we're beside the meters, so we're not...
Yeah, it's, it's, you know, we're not next to anyone's home. And it's actually in the tree line. This place is actually, you would have to find it if you came to it. You know, it's not where you can actually see it from the public road.
I think I'm, I think I'm still just a little confused about what we're wanting to do, like, are we...
Apparently, it was saying that we couldn't have any cars on the outside, any.
Yeah.
So we're looking for a compromise. They said not even his, if he pulls up, they said none. The code officer said none.
We can just get a variance, a amendment to a percentage of the 2.6 acres to, to store my cars on the outside. And the, this thing is on A1 at the quarter, residential at the quarter, but it's able to store farm equipment, tractors, lawn mowers, all that, but I don't, I don't see the difference with cars.
Sharna, I have a question for you. So is the character of the area, is it pretty much residential in the area? And the second question is, if they're all tagged and they're all legal, is there a limit, as long as they're operational and tagged, is there a limit to how many vehicles you can have or be stored outside?
Well, okay, so it's, it's not, it's not, no one lives there, so it's just a shop. It's just that building. You cannot have storage without it being properly zoned. If all the cars were his and they were operable, we wouldn't be here.
Okay.
It would be, it would be, okay, it would be allowed.
Okay.
But, so, you know, if they, like I said, if they were operable and had, you know, then we wouldn't be here. But I just wanted to take this out and show you, there is the tree, the solar farm here.
That's the substation right beside...
Yeah, that's the substation right beside of it. So the closest residence is here, and then on the other side of the substation, it's just, you know, a solar farm requires an A zoning for agriculture, commercial type of agriculture use, but there's no other commercial use in this area. I understand what they're saying about just having cars there and his stuff, you know, parked there, but like I said, if it was, if they were running vehicles and, and it wasn't just outside storage of, you know, vehicles that are not running, I don't think we would have an issue.
Thank you.
So, Sharna, if this passes, what's the next step? And then if it fails, what's the next step?
Well, the next step is to get them all removed.
If it fails?
If it fails.
If it passes, does that mean he can put as many cars as he wants to there and not have any regulations? Or what hap...
If it passes, then there's a development plan that has to be turned in. It does have to be fenced for any type of outside storage. It has to have a fence around the perimeter, commercial driveway, you know, it would be a complete development plan.
Okay.
And as far as the number, I think, Sharna, if, that would depend on whatever conditions they place, right?
Right.
You said, if it's his vehicle that's tagged, it can be out there, because the code officer said, right, right, that if it runs, because the code officer said that can even be out there. But you're saying it can if it's tagged and it's his?
If there's, and he's not working on it.
Right, but I'm saying, so they said nothing, but you're saying if it's his and it runs...
Yeah, I mean, we can't tell you can have any cars on your property, so.
No, he said.
Okay.
And if this fails, it's got 60, six months to come back to look at it. I mean, what happens if it, if it, if it's denied?
Right, they would have to, if it fails, they'll have to wait. If they wanted to apply for another rezon, it would be six months. If it failed, I would like for the board to say, let's have it cleaned up in such and such a time. And that would help us with code enforcement, as well as give them time to, you know, make the changes and get it cleaned up.
Well, normally, you'd have a plan, development plan in advance of this, right? We're kind of going backwards here?
No, no, you get the rezon first.
Okay.
And then the development plan. This is a little backwards because it's already there.
Okay.
You know, but, you know, like, it would have to be gravel, everything parked out there would have to be on gravel. It would be, I mean, they would have to turn in a site development plan. And that does normally follow the rezon.
And then get a business license if it's gonna be a business, but he says it's a hobby, so wouldn't, wouldn't be a business license required for...
If, if it was rezoned and, you know, he's actually working on other, you know, citizens' cars and receiving money for it, he needs a business license.
And there was some mention about some trucks being stored there for, like, a fence across, that there's some trucks being stored there, is that correct? Like, for parking spots being paid for or something? I heard about that? No?
No.
No?
Describe, what he's asking about is, you said you had people that you allowed to...
Were they paying to park?
They needed you to...
They, they, it was one truck, the guy come in on the weekend. It's a box truck. He parks it there, but I don't, we don't charge him anything.
I think he was also asking, I think you said you had a lot of friends that didn't have anywhere else to keep their vehicles?
Those regular park.
Yeah, so he's saying that, but are they, are they charging, are you charging them to...
No, I don't mind that.
Did you hear that?
Yeah, okay.
Any other questions for the applicant? We'll close the public hearing.
Okay, the public hearing is closed, and an entertaining motion from the board.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to, this is probably one of the most confusing rezones I've ever heard. I need more information to be able to make a decision. I want to table this for 30 days and find out more information about what they want to do and what their plans are, and if he's actually running a business, and then bring it back. Otherwise, I mean, I'm looking at denying it. So I want to give them 30 days to try to come up with a better plan.
And, and so, sir, if I could, what I would like to do is, is to be able to verify that these are his vehicles.
Okay, yeah, let's do, yeah, let's do that.
So your motion is to table it for 30 days?
Yeah, give them information about what his plan is, if the vehicles are his, if they're tagged, and what his plan is going forward. Otherwise...
My motion to table this request for 30 days.
Second.
We got a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Passes unanimously. 6.3.
Okay, I'm gonna show you this, this map that shows the property running on Mountain Creek and then on Wall Road, and part of it's beginning to split off. And this area right here is the part that is, they're asking for a rezon. So this is 6.3, case Z250218, rezoned 2.45 acres from A2 to R1 to create two buildable lots. Applicant is Brent Miller. Owner is Stefan Vansika. The property is located on Wall Road. This is in District 6. There was a couple of people that spoke at the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission did recommend approval.
All right.
We'll open...
Hey, there.
We'll open the public hearing on this matter, and the applicant can address the board.
Thank you for your time. My name is Brent Miller, and I am looking to have Zero Wall Road rezoned in order to subdivide one parcel into two lots, and basically, we can build two homes for personal use, one for myself and one for my brother-in-law. We're basically going from A2 to R1. Both lots will have over 190 feet of road frontage once that is, once we have it rezoned. A level four soil test has already been done on it. I have spoken to David Dixon at the county, and he has said that we have enough good soil to have two conventional septic tanks on both lots. We plan on building very nice homes in this area. It will only increase the property values in that area. Anybody I suppose I'm willing to work with as far as, whatever needs to be done, we just want to make it right and be respectable to the neighbors around us.
Any questions for the applicant at this time? Saying none. Is there anyone else here who would like to speak in favor of this request? Is there anyone here who would like to speak in opposition?
We did have somebody in the back.
Please come forward, sir. Please state your name and address.
Thank y'all for being here and hearing this. I'm Larry Metcalf, 2435 Mountain Creek Church Road. I'm adjoining this lot here. I have Mountain Creek Church and Wall Road as they do. My concern is my well, my water. I mean, it's 25 feet off the property line, and I don't understand how three septic tanks pumping on that is not gonna flow downhill, and I'm way downhill on that. They built four houses behind me on Wall Road. They all have three acres. One has six. They've cleared out their backyards. Now they have a backyard. If they put the Sackett house here, I'll be going at counted into a backyard. I won't even have a backyard. It'll be straight on my property line. And...
Larry, which property is yours on that map?
To the right. To the right, on the corner right there. Yes, ma'am.
Right here. Is that you?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
They actually had to redraw it to get, to draw around the septic tank on the one time to get it in, which brought the property lying on down, almost to the front of my house, to the front of Mountain Creek. And if they rezoned the back R1, then they would, the guy still owns the front that sold them that. So he will rezon the front R1. I'll have four houses sitting there, right beside them. I mean, it's just putting Gwinnett County right in my backyard. I walk out the door and see a house standing there. I don't mind the one house, but the two is gonna push it, plum up on my back porch almost literally.
Thank you, sir.
And I guess I'll be playing on y'all's decision on that.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else here who would like to speak against this request? Would the applicant like to address those comments?
I also just want to state that there is county water at the road, so we will not be digging any wells. And like, I also want to restate again that we have went to the county already, and there is enough good soil, over 25,000 square feet of good soil per lot. So we will, you know, obviously go by all the guidelines and make sure we use all the setbacks and go through the county and make sure that everything is approved accordingly.
Both the houses are gonna come out on the one road?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Okay.
From right here on Wall Road. So basically, once it's split right here, we'll have about 190 feet, 191 feet of road frontage on one lot and 196 feet of road frontage on the other lot, which, that will actually make the lots larger than the four lots that are right across the road from us as far as road frontage goes. And our houses will be, like I said, a little bit larger than all these across from here, because they're gonna have nice homes.
And both houses will face Wall Road?
That's correct.
Shared driveway or different driveways?
Two driveways.
What's he talking about cutting out the septic tank? What's that all about? Can you explain that? About the septic tank being cut out of the lot?
Do you know? I mean, is that why you had to make that dip there?
Oh, I didn't do that.
Yeah, I have, I have no idea why that little indigenous there.
I, I do know that in the last meeting, he had mentioned that, and the board was saying, basically, you know, I have to go through the county, and obviously, if there's not enough good soil there, then we can't do it. So there's many issues there, which I restate, yes, of course, I have to go through the county and make sure that everything's approved accordingly.
Any other questions for the applicant? Saying none, we'll close the public hearing.
All right, entertaining motion from the board on this request.
Sharna, one question. Do you know where the septic tank fields are gonna be versus where, where Mr. Metcalf's well is presently sitting?
No, no, I do not. I have... Do you know right off where your septic will be on this one?
So we still have to go to the county and basically have all that drawn out and approved. Right now, we just know that we have enough good soil to have two good conventional septic tanks on there. So whatever we need to do, we will do. If we need to move it one way or the other, that's not a problem right now.
I believe the Health Department looks at that when they're in the field.
I believe so as well.
Yeah, where the location of the nearest well is.
And these houses will be ranch-style houses or two-story, and what kind of, what kind of price range and size?
We're looking at around 3,000 to 3,500 square feet. And we're still looking at styles at the moment, but probably, probably ranch.
Mr. Metcalf's concerned about his backyard. What would you do as far as foot, trees, or some kind of buffer?
We can do trees, if that's something that's, that's not a problem. We can, we can do that.
Okay.
What's board's pleasure?
Okay, I'm making a motion that we approve this, given the condition that, first of all, Health Department approves it, and it meets our requirements, which that's the standard, that you put as much buffer as possible between your houses and Mr. Metcalf's property. And if any concerns when it comes to the septic tank that we deal with at that point.
Understood.
All right, did everyone hear that? Sharna, you want to repeat it?
Okay, he made a motion to approve, and with buffer, as much of a buffer as possible to screen the adjoining property, and that he comply with the Health Department regulations.
All right. Do we have a second?
Second.
We got a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Passes unanimously. We have an annexation request, city of Social Circle, 27.937 acres, Fair Play Road. Do you have that up there?
Yes, sir.
And that little bit is...
Just that one little part. The rest of it's in the city, and so this is just a balance of that parcel, of this adjoining parcel, that just happens to be in the county. So they're wanting to get that into the city limits of Social Circle. So it is a 100% annexation.
All right, any questions from the board? Entertainer recommendation? I believe this is in Lee's district. Do you have a recommendation, Mr. Bradford?
I'm looking at the, so that's on, it's on Fair Play. Is it inside or outside the bypass?
I'm sorry.
Is, I'm just making sure I'm seeing it right. I gotta just look over here.
Is that not the bypass running?
It, it is. Well, this is Roy Malcolm.
Okay.
And then the Social Circle Parkway is right here, and this is their site plan.
It's for a data center that Social Circle's wanting to try to get down.
I'm not sure if this one is the data center. I think this is just some commercial and warehouse.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
I mean, it's, when it comes to annexations, we really don't get a lot of opportunity. On the backside of it, it's sort of, it's a formality, so...
Formality is actually pretty much for the record, if you, you know.
Make a motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve.
Thank you.
Got a second? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Passes unanimously. You have your administrative consent agenda before you. Are there any questions about those nine items that centered in there?
I'm making a motion to approve.
Second.
Yeah, motion, second to approve those. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Passes unanimously. All right, Keith, you're up. Or your, your assistant, Evan, what you want to do? You and Scott?
I'm gonna let Colonel Wizner do the ask for the budget amendment, but if y'all allow me just a few minutes to speak, and as a newly-elected sheriff, you know, you always caution about when you get up and speak in front of a group, especially when you, when you're asking for this amount of money. But let me tell you just a few numbers of, of where I came in and what I, as, as January 1, a lot of people don't know that we were 59 positions short before we started asking for staff to, to facilitate and, and run this new facility. January 1, we got 25. We did the budget amendment in May, I believe, and got another 25. Part of my recruitment was to create a recruitment team or the Sheriff's Office to, to enhance my hiring ability. And I know you saw at the beginning of the meeting where I asked for additional pay for the deputies. We determined that we were about 15, 18% behind agencies from around us. And the, and the Board of Education, I mean, the board here graciously approved a step pay to enable me to hire people. And in six months, when I walked in the door, if I done the numbers, and a lot of people don't know that I inherited or absorbed 911, which had nine additional vacancies. So I had a total of 143 vacancies, basically day one of what I had to, the challenge of trying to hire. Would not have been able to do it without a pay increase. Would not have been able to do it had I not been competitive. We created a recruitment team, and as of today, I've been able to hire 87 deputies, investigators, detention staff, and I got another 13 supposed to start next Monday. So I know it's hard for y'all to understand that, that it's, it's a difficult situation. We put everybody in. Difficult situation your board's in, because it's my job to ask for the money and their job to provide it. and their job to provide it. And they've done that, and I know it was a difficult situation for them to be in. I know that we have a tremendous amount of support in Walton County because of the level of service that we provide, and we're gonna be able to continue to do that. That's what we want to do. I want to thank y'all, whether you voted for it or not, because I know it all puts y'all in a difficult situation, but this is a constitutional duty that the sheriff has. And one of the things that they prevented for y'all was from a federal judge coming down here and saying that we're gonna spend 10 times the money, we're gonna build a jail 10 times the size of it. We're going from a dilapidated jail where, in 13 months, I spent $263,000 just to maintain that facility, just to keep it at 70 degrees in there. Unfortunate situation we've been in. I want to thank y'all, the public, for their support. It's a challenge that I'm willing to take. Only made one promise when I was running, that I'd work hard for you, be transparent to you, let you know what I'm doing, lay it out on the line. I think the Board of Commissioners and the County Manager can say that I've done that. We hadn't always agreed on what things, but when we walked out the door, we was on the same page about what we were gonna do. The next 25 that I'm asking for is not... That's the bare minimum to run this facility. I'd had a study done by the Georgia Sheriff's Association where it was much higher, probably about 30, 40 more deputies or jailers or staff to be able to open this up. And the thing that we don't realize is that he spoke about me having housed inmates out in two facilities. I got a call from Sheriff Cochran down in Washington County where I was paying $55 a day. He upped my rate up to $65 a day, overnight, blink of eye. And that's the taxpayers' dollar that we're spending on that. I have approximately 1,900 warrants that are out there that I have to serve. Right now, we serve them on a daily basis, but when they come in the door, they make bond, they go out, and that takes time, money, and for everybody to process those inmates. I went back into jail today. I had people sleeping in the holding cells, which I'm not supposed to do. Had them sleeping in hallways that lock... Where I can lock doors in the old visitation. Some of y'all remember where they used to come into the jail and visit with the inmates. I got people staying there. I got inmates that are on oxygen standing in the holding cell. And the fortunate thing about this is, is that we got this new facility. It belongs to y'all. I get the opportunity to run it, and I'm gonna do it in the most frugal manner that I can. Our new medical facility's gonna have 56 beds in it with two infirmaries in there. Some of the requests that y'all see that we are trying to be as... Spend your money as frugally as we can. And I want to thank y'all for being able to here to support me and the people that we serve. So, because we serve the same people. So, I'll answer any questions when we get up here and ask for these 25, but it's imperative for me to have these people to be able to open it up. We have a plan to move these inmates, starting September the 15th, be completed by October, to minimize the amount of time that we're operating two facilities, which is gonna cost more money. So, y'all have any questions? I'm standing here, because I work for you. Yes, ma'am? That one, once I turn it over back to the Commission, that'll be a decision they make. I can tell you that the jail where I have the inmates at is deplorable and dilapidated. And that's as much as I can say about that. Yes, ma'am?
So, it was my understanding, the old jail that you have, when it was built many years ago, it was built to add on the block. That was never done. I looked in your jail today, and I went to the back, and yes, it needs a lot of cleaning. You don't wait for things to not be cleaned and decide to clean it again. The same thing to be working on, and this, I'm not saying that. I came to every meeting except for one meeting I missed, when people started talking about building this new prison. It's not a jail, it's a prison.
This is a jail.
It's a prison.
All right, all right. We've... Ma'am, ma'am?
It was my understanding that we got all these new beds, and we're gonna get people from other counties to come in, and they have to pay for their beds.
You're gonna have to stop believing everything on the internet, ma'am. Listen, Keith opened it up for questions, but I need to cut it. We got business. You can talk to him after this meeting, ma'am. I need to proceed with business. Counsel, can we take care of these first two requests at one time?
Mr. Chairman, we did have one gentleman that was actually had his hand up first, Mr. Hawke.
I wanted to ask Keith, once the prison, once the jail is open, what would he say if we bring these other prisons back from Walton County? About a million dollars here.
And Keith will be glad to answer any questions after we take care of this. We have all the Sheriff's employees, if I understand right, Scott, that work the night shift, gets an extra dollar an hour.
I would take these that's left, that I separately take one of the time.
All right. Well, the first one is requesting $25,000 for the 911, E-911, to pay the shift differential for those that work night shift versus day shift, and that's a dollar an hour.
Motion to approve.
We got a motion to approve.
Second.
We got a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aha.
Aye.
Oppose? Passes unanimously. The second request is the budget amendment we talked about previously, adding 25 more additional detention officers' positions, uniforms and equipment at a cost of $2,186,721.83. And the reason we're doing that, we kept that out of the budget that was just approved, so that would not be in the meal rate increase for the taxpayers.
So, Mr. Chairman, this comes out of fund balance, is what you're saying, right?
Sir?
Comes out of fund balance?
It comes out of the fund balance.
So what's the plan for next year? You think we can absorb it in next year's budget?
I'm sorry, Kirk.
What's the plan for next year as related to this?
Well, I'm gonna pray and hope that the new growth everybody's talking about is gonna cover this $2,001,000 where the meal rate... We won't have to discuss ever another meal rate increase. And year three, we should be able to discuss a rollback. But that's my look forward. There's no guarantees. I make a motion we approve this request.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Passes unanimously. I want to have discussion on the next item, school resource officers. Bear County Board bowed up unless the school board paid more. And I just read where school board's gonna pay for the resource officers. I read all these contracts, and it got lost in the election between Joe Leaven and Keith coming in, but I had flagged this, this compensation. We got 12 schools we're covering, correct, two officers a school.
Not two... It's two officers in the high school, but...
Two officers in the high school and one other.
Rodeck Rogan people.
Anyway, the compensation's been the same amount the last four years from the school board, at $802,769. And last year, while I ran the numbers, it was closer to $1,009,000 that we were paying out. And I'm not wanting to gouge the school board or anything, but... And I'm aware the state gives them $50,000 per school for security, and it's 12 schools. So that's $600,000 there. So the school board's not putting forth but a couple hundred thousand for the school resource officers. This has already been signed for this coming year, but it's got a 60-day without any cause that it can be terminated. I just think we need to sit down with the school board and get more serious. There's equipment involved, there's personnel involved. This has been the same amount for four years, and we've had four pay raises over those four years. And it doesn't even cover that. What's... What does counsel recommend on... I mean, you've reviewed... The contract's good. It's the amount that... Can we go back and ask them in their budget and pay?
Yeah, I mean, I don't think you've approved... I mean, you haven't approved this contract yet.
The sheriff has signed it, and the school two superintendent, not this one, has not signed it. I would love to go sit down and talk with them and see if there's not... What's the other board members' feelings about this?
I mean, if the contract between... I mean, I don't see why we wouldn't discuss it every year.
I agree. I think it needs to at least keep pace. Otherwise, the property owners is picking up the school system security. And we all want our kids to be safe. That's why it's a tender subject to even discuss after what happened so close to us in Bear County.
My kids go to Walton County schools, and I'll tell you, I want them to be as safe as possible.
I know I do, too. My grandkids go.
I mean, we review almost every... We review every other contract every year, so I don't know why we wouldn't review this and make sure everybody's doing their part.
I didn't have a question.
No, we were just discussing why it wasn't reviewed every year as to some relationship cost, but you got one board dealing with another board, we got a new sheriff coming in that had a zillion other things on his mind than this.
I think you're able to do whatever you want to ultimately, but I think the sheriff would tell you that the number is... I think he said that that number is... The 802, the actual cost of the deputies is not 802. It's less than that.
Can somebody work us up the actual costs with benefits?
Or the salaries for the 12 deputies in the school, like $769,000. They pay us 802. And then I've spoken with Mr. Underwood, the superintendent, about absorbing the cost for the West Side precincts in the parking lot, which we plan to open up soon.
I knew they worked with you on that, but I'd like to see the numbers with benefits, everything. Just feel good about it. I mean, we've already got this in the budget because it's the same amount as last year.
Sounds like it'd be good, yeah, you could revisit that for next year.
It's not gonna...
Because the contracts will come before you every year.
Yeah, but I just like analysis before it comes up again. All right. I'll entertain a motion that we approve this.
I make a motion to approve.
We got a motion to approve.
I'll second the motion.
Got two seconds. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Passes unanimously. We have two change orders, 9.1 Reeves Young. You want to cover it down? It looked like it zeroed out.
It is. It's a... Just like several of the other change orders on this, they're not always negative. It's just a way to keep the current contract up to date. This was a negotiated change order and at zero cost to... And no change to the overall contract price.
This is for the record, then?
Yes, sir.
On the contract. Entertainer motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Got a motion to approve? I'll second it, get it to a vote. Any further discussion or questions that ends up being a zero change proposal? All those in favor, say aye.
Aha.
Oppose? Passes unanimously. The change proposal number 40 is also a zero, is it not?
That is correct, and it's just for the record to keep the contract up to date.
And it has to be done for the record.
Motion to approve.
Got a motion to approve?
Second.
Got a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aha.
Oppose? Say nay. Now, the big one, inmate medical service, Walton County Jail.
Ready?
Yes. So, we were... We kinda came in exactly where we thought we were gonna be. It was a difficult position, having to submit the budget at the beginning of the year and kind of predict what that contract cost was gonna be. And I know it was a very big undertaking, but we had the group that met that included the County Manager and Ms. Rhonda to sit down and view all of the submittals in depth, and we actually did two. We did a review, and then we took the top, what we considered to be the top three, and did a deeper dive review of them, asked a whole lot of questions. And what we came up with, the committee definitely feels like is gonna be the most qualified bidder for the contract. I'd be glad to answer any questions about it, because it's...
Well, for those not involved, how many bidders did we have that submitted proposals?
We had several that were kicked out for submitting improper proposals, but Ms. Rhonda would have to tell you the...
We had 10 that submitted, three that were not acceptable because they did not include their e-Verify information, or they included incorrect e-Verify information. And then we had seven... Well...
For the general public, so you know what we're talking about, those outside medical companies that provides inmate medical to the jails. And we have to hire them, because every inmate has to be checked out and has to be taken care of medically, and it's a large number. It's somewhere between $4 and $6 million. I don't know what this proposal was based on the number of inmates that's there any particular day. And they come up with a company that they... It's not the ones that's presently providing the inmate service in the old facility. It's a new company that they like.
So, the... Some of the things that went into selection of the company, I mean, we're obviously very concerned about the health and welfare of the inmates. The sheriff mentioned the number of hospital bedrooms that we actually have now. To put it into perspective, our current medical facility, we've got like three or four beds. That's it.
For 376.
For 500 and...
Oh, 550 now.
Population, but obviously, this new facility is built to expand in the future, but it is a... It's almost an apples-and-orange comparison, what we have and what we're going to. But outside of the care of the inmates, the biggest thing that we want to try to do as a Sheriff's Office is limit the outside medical expense cost. And that comes in with having to transport inmates to the hospital. Then also, we have to go back and review all of these medical bills to make sure that they're submitted properly. That is a nightmare in and of itself. One of the criteria we use to select the company... Rhonda, I guess I'm not getting in trouble by talking about this, because the proceedings are closed. One of the criteria we use is a company that has all of that built in to where they're self-auditing all the bills and giving us a report. We're gonna free up an employee-plus on this alone, and we feel like over time, we're gonna see the number of the medical costs that we incur now, having to send people out to the hospital. We're gonna be able to do a whole lot more in-house that will prevent us from incurring those costs.
those costs.
Any other questions from the board?
In the recommendation, I'll just conclude this. The recommendation that we're putting before you tonight is within the budgeted amount of the budget that was adopted.
We're very fortunate that what we've already forecasted in the budget, months and months and months ahead of schedule, we came right in on it. So we should not need to amend the budget to incorporate the contract.
And the company that's being recommended is MedHealth?
That's correct.
LLC. All right. Entertain a motion that we move ahead with this contract.
Motion to approve.
Got a motion to approve?
Second.
Got a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank y'all. Okay. Fire hydrant services. It's my understanding that sealed bids were proposed and open, and recommendation for Georgia Hydrant was low bid, and happens to be one of our commissioners, so he will recuse himself.
I'm going to recuse myself, sir.
It was a bid on a state level, and he by far was the cheapest one, and recommend that Georgia Hydrant Services be the hydrant repairs, taps, and backflow testing.
I make a motion to approve?
Got a motion? I'll second. Any further discussion?
Is this a total price or per unit price? How's this priced out?
Per unit.
Per unit?
Yeah, it's... You know, it could be 20,000 if it had to be paid in a year, or it could be 100,000. You don't know that if you can price it three years and for years, it's always going to put that down. It's a legal requirement.
No conflict, anything?
No, sir. All legal requirements have been met with this.
Any other questions? Got a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Oppose? And we have one abstention, recusing himself. All right. Bay Creek Church Road Milling and Widening Project. John, you going to come down, tell us this is under the Splotch Funds?
This is actually part of the AL-MIG, the second AL-MIG that we got from GDOT.
Okay.
That's one of the projects we identified. It's the widening of Bay Creek Church Road, two feet on each side. We're asking that you accept the low bid of $302,086 from Blunt Construction.
All right. Entertain a motion to accept the low bid that he just quoted.
I make a motion to approve?
Got a motion to approve?
Second.
Got a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Passes unanimously. We've been asked to nominate someone to the Legislative Leadership Conference Business Session for ACCG, and I would like to make that nomination of Kirkland Dixon to be this year's Legislative Leadership Conference Voting Delegate.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? And we have nobody signed up. Are there any announcements that anyone needs to make?
I would like to take this opportunity to thank Sheriff Brooks and his staff. You came into office, and I mean, you took on a huge assignment, and you're doing a good job and doing the best you can with it. Thank you for not only looking out for this board and the people here, but thank you for paying so much close attention to the citizens of our county and caring about them and being everyone, Sheriff, as you promised you would.
Amen to that. Thank you, sir. Any other announcements or comments? I think the next board meeting is what date? September? So I can make my announcement about those season then. It's September the 6th. Please don't call the sheriff when people start shooting and...
Sheriff.
Sir?
Does that... Sheriff. Sheriff Farm.
No. You're not invited to my kids' stuff, Phil. Entertain a motion that we adjourn.
So move them.
Second.